Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, that's quite Sophie's Choice there. I think in Week Four, I'll likely demure on prognosticating regarding the life or death of a bill. I will say, Representative Kerner, that I should not speak with great competency on the problem that I am not trying to solve. The problem I'm trying to solve is that I believe the rights of Floridians are being unnecessarily abridged based on this fiction that open carry makes people less safe. So, that's the argument I'm making. Other proponents of this bill make the other argument, that this solves inadvertent display, but that's not my argument.
Representative Slossberg.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Gates, can firearms go off by accident?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would likely defer that question to someone who's more of an expert, perhaps Representative Comby. He'll ask it again.
Representative Comby, you're recognized to take the question from Representative Gates if you so choose.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Once again, the question is...
Representative Slossberg, repeat the question.
It's a tough question, huh? Can firearms go off by accident?
Representative Comby.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Slossberg, I think that firearms can be discharged negligently, as we discussed previously today about the negligent and reckless discharge of firearms, but firearms just don't go off accidentally by themselves, no.
Representative Slossberg.
So, basically, you're saying that firearms can't go off by accident?
Representative Slossberg, a question to the bill, to the bill's sponsor.
The question is, how do they go off by accident?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Slossberg, I believe the answer you've been provided is that guns don't just go off suaspeante, there has to be some act of negligence that creates the discharge of a firearm.
Representative Slossberg.
In my gym, there are signs, two signs when you go in, absolutely no firearms allowed. Do you have those kind of signs in your gym?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It will likely come as no surprise to the membership that I am not currently the member of a gym or fitness club.
And I believe that's now on the record. Representative Slossberg.
Would you believe there's probably more than 20,000 gyms in the state of Florida?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Slossberg, I have no guess as to how many gyms there are in the state of Florida.
Representative Slossberg.
In my gym, it's Lifetime Fitness, and they're a large chain operation in the United States. And so, there's like, a basketball court. And I'd just like to know how this law is going to affect people carrying weapons on a basketball court.
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Slossberg, the way the bill would affect that gym or that basketball court is that the owner of that gym or basketball court has the total discretion and total authority to ban firearms. But if you are a member of that gym, they most certainly would not be able to ban guns.
Representative Slossberg.
So, I really didn't get the answer to that. I really didn't understand it. I'm serious. Or you could take, if, let's say that I'm on the treadmill. How does it work if you're on the treadmill?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Whether you are on the treadmill, on the basketball court, or in any other place where you are on the private property of another, the person who owns or leases the private property makes all the rules as it relates to open carry under this bill.
Representative Slossberg.
So, in other words, what you're saying is that people on the treadmill, this doesn't apply to them, or it doesn't apply to gyms?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I may be saying just the opposite of that, Representative Slossberg. I'm saying that it is under the discretion of any private property owner to determine what the firearms policy is as it relates to open carry on their property.
Representative Slossberg.
I really didn't understand it. Like, if you're at Lifetime Fitness, let's say, and you're on the treadmill, can you carry a gun, open carry or not?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That would be up to the gym owner.
Representative Slossberg, you done? Okay. Representative Dudley, I believe you wanted a second bite at the apple for new information only.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Gates, with regard to holstering, can you refer us to where in your bill the holstering requirements are, specifically the compromise that you worked out with the police chiefs, which, am I correct in saying that it includes long guns? AK-47s, whatever, they can be bagged? They don't have to be holstered? Is that right?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is definitely not right. No one can openly carry a long gun because one can openly carry only if they have a permit, and one can only acquire such a permit for a handgun. Lines 91 through 95 express the holstering language that was agreed to by the Florida Police Chiefs Association and myself.
Representative Fullwood.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a couple of questions. I hope I'm not redundant. At one point, I was in the back eating. So, we talked about private institutions being able to opt out. Does that include churches?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes.
Representative Fullwood.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. What about, we just talked about guns on campus. Would a school like a University of Miami, which is a private college, would they be able to opt out?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The answer to that question is yes. I should clarify, religious institutions and churches can opt out so long as they are the owner or lessee of the real property, which is the case generally.
Representative Fullwood.
Thank you. So, we've created a situation where private colleges can opt out, but our public colleges can't?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, yeah. A private college owns the property and thus is able to dictate what the protocols are on their property. A public college or university is owned by the people. And so, we would not allow someone to abridge the people's rights on the people's own land doing the people's own business in that circumstance if my bill were to pass and Representative Stube's bill were to pass.
Representative Fullwood.
Thank you for that eloquent denunciation there. I want to talk about racial profiling for a quick, a question about racial profiling. I was reading an article, and it talked about an amendment in the Texas bill that basically would prohibit police officers from stopping anyone because they saw their gun, their holster gun. And that amendment passed a committee and then was eventually defeated, but the thought was two schools of thought, and I want to get your opinion on it. One was, it would help with racial profiling, one. And two, there was the folks who, you know, feel really good about the Fourth Amendment, and of course, the Fourth Amendment is an unreasonable search and seizure. So, they felt like that amendment would protect those two areas. Have you given any thought to an amendment or a provision of that nature?
Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I believe that what you have just expressed constitutes the most important balance that we must strike in this bill, and that is the right of law enforcement to be able to have someone display their license, and we have to balance that against the risk that law enforcement would profile people of color, gun owners, people in specific neighborhoods. I have tried to achieve that balance by lashing the language on lines 30 through 37 with the language on lines 38 through 41 so that we always make sure that a law enforcement officer can ask to see someone's license and identification, but we don't authorize a law enforcement officer to have immunity when they are profiling people or harassing people. If I were to have gone entirely in the direction of what some people in law enforcement wanted, I think the bill would have been out of balance because it would have allowed law enforcement to harass gun owners, people of color, or people in certain communities.
Representative Fullwood.
Yeah, I think I'm good, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Okay. Representative Moskowitz, you had your microphone up. No question. All righty. Well, I think I know the answer to this question already, but are there amendments on the desk?
On the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Read the First Amendment.
Representative Gates offered the following amendment, barcode 551347, remove line 34 and insert an amendment.
Representative Gates, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment corrects a Scrivener's error.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor. Saying none, are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Saying none, Representative Gates, you're recognized to close on your amendment. Having waved close, all those in favor of the adoption amendment say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, no. Show the amendment is adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Gates offered the following amendment with title amendment, barcode 456793, remove lines 78 to 90 and insert an amendment.
Representative Gates, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment clarifies that a public hospital can set firearms policies as it relates to open carry within that public hospital.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor. Saying none, are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Saying none, Representative Gates, you're recognized to close on your amendment. Having waved close, all those in favor of the adoption amendment say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, no. Show the amendment is adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Moskowitz offered the following amendment, barcode 100077, remove line 81 and insert an amendment.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment would prohibit open carry within 500 feet of an establishment that serves alcohol.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor. Are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There is no evidence to suggest that people within the geographic area that Representative Moskowitz has defined would be any more deserving of a deprivation of their constitutional rights. The amendment is unfriendly, and I would ask that you oppose it.
Further debate on the amendment? Saying none, Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll wave close.
Having waved close, all those in favor of the adoption amendment say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, no.
No.
Show the amendment is not adopted. Seeing five hands. The clerk will unlock the machine, and members will record their presence. Quorum call, quorum call. Have all members recorded their presence? Have all members recorded their presence? Quorum call, quorum call. Have all members recorded their presence? The clerk will lock the machine and announce the presence of a quorum.
113 members voting a quorum is present, Mr. Speaker.
The question now occurs on the amendment 100077. The clerk will unlock the machine, and members will proceed to vote. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? The clerk will lock the machine and announce the vote.
36 yays, 78 nays, Mr. Speaker.
Show the amendment is not adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Moskowitz offered the following amendment with title amendment, barcode 969003, remove line 81 and insert an amendment.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment would prohibit open carry within 500 feet of a movie theater.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor. Are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Representative Gates, you're recognized in debate.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The amendment is unfriendly for the very reasons that the prior amendment was unfriendly.
Saying no further other debate. Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Real quick, the last amendment was unfriendly specifically because there was no evidence. I just want to provide some evidence why this amendment is necessary. 1994, a shooter walked into a movie theater and killed someone during the movie Schindler's List. In 2006, a gunman walked into a movie theater and killed two people while watching X-Men: Last Stand. In 2012, Aurora, Colorado, you might remember that 12 people were killed. And in 2015, in Louisiana, while watching a comedy, Trainwreck, two people were killed in a movie theater. I believe that's enough evidence for this amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Moskowitz, having closed on his amendment, all those in favor of the adoption amendment say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, no.
No.
Show the amendment is not adopted. Seeing five hands. The clerk will unlock the machine, and members will record their vote. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? The clerk will lock the machine and announce the vote.
36 yays, 78 nays, Mr. Speaker.
Show the amendment is not adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Moskowitz offered the following amendment with title amendment, barcode 462803, remove line 81 and insert an amendment.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment would prohibit anyone from openly carry within 500 feet of a religious institution, which is a church.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor. Representative Harrell.
Thank you very much. Does the bill, the underlying bill, not provide for the owner of that private property to forbid the caring, open caring on their property should they do, should they choose to do so? And that would not, would that not include a church, a theater, a bar, or any private establishment?
Representative Moskowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. A fantastic question, Representative. Thank you so much. So, I'll answer as to the religious institution, not the movie theater, because that, we've already gotten to that one. But, yes, you're correct. And in the private institution, you would not be able to. This amendment is within 500 feet of that institution. And the reason that's important is, I want to remind you what happened in South Carolina last year when an individual who I will not name, you know, walked into an African-American church and killed six women and three men. And that's why this amendment is important.
Any further questions? Representative Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative, do you know of churches or religious institutions that are not owned, that are leased, they're leasing spaces in shopping centers? Do you know of those?
Representative Moskowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Of course, there are religious institutions that are leasing in private centers and, you know, might have some private-public partnership, absolutely, Representative.
Further questions? Representative Williams, or not. Are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Is there debate? Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the reasons I stated before, the amendment is unfriendly.
Further debate on the amendment? Representative Williams. Representative Williams, you're recognized in debate.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Representative Richardson, for, I appreciate that. Members, I would encourage you to support this amendment by Representative Moskowitz. I had an opportunity just a few weeks ago to visit South Carolina Charleston and go to Mother Emanuel Church. If you recall, we took a moment of silence on this very floor last year when one of our colleagues in the South Carolina Legislature was one of the nine that were gunned down. I think this is very important. I think what Representative Moskowitz is trying to accomplish with this amendment in our churches is necessary and needed, and I thank you for it. And I encourage you to vote in favor of this amendment. Support our churches. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to close on your amendment. Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize, let me go back. Representative Ray Winkle-Vassalinda, you're recognized in debate. I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm going to be voting down on this amendment. This amendment has nothing to do with what happened at those particular places and with those particular tragic incidents. No open carry was at issue there. They were not concealed weapons permit holders, and so, I don't think this amendment has anything to do with Representative Gates's bill.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. See, that's what's happened. We've become so inflexible on this issue that we can't even agree that guns don't belong within one foot of a church. Sure, fine, they're not allowed in the church, but one foot in the church, one foot out of the church, we can't even agree that that's okay. It's funny, we're, it's okay to infringe on the right to bear arms in Disney World, you're all okay with that, but you're not willing to do it if you're in one foot of a church. That's how inflexible we've become on this issue. Vote up on this amendment.
Representative Moskowitz, having closed on his amendment, all those in favor of the adoption amendment say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, no.
No.
Show the amendment. Seeing five hands, the clerk will unlock the machine, and members record their vote. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? The clerk will lock the machine and announce the vote.
32 yays, 81 nays, Mr. Speaker.
Show the amendment is not adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Moskowitz offered the following amendment, barcode 212899, remove line 81 and insert an amendment.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is a simple amendment. It just says that you may not openly carry within 500 feet of a polling place.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor. Saying none, are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Debate on the amendment. Representative Gates, you're recognized in debate.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The amendment is unfriendly for different reasons than the last amendment was unfriendly. The last amendment specifically said in it that it could only be circumstances in which a religious organization owned or leased real property, which of course, was redundant because that was already in the bill because religious organizations can be owners and lessees of real property. This amendment is unfriendly for a different reason. There is no evidence that within 500 feet of a polling place, we ought to abridge someone's Second Amendment rights.
Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And again, members, I'm encouraging you to support this amendment. We know that, just like in this process where sometimes things get a little contentious, you know, emotions get high, well, just imagine how things go at these polling places. The last thing that we want to do is have election sites that where folks can come in and potentially have open carry and intimidate voters, right? You may not feel intimidated, but folks can get intimidated just by, in the past, where they had, you know, ID laws. And we see that in other states where they're going to the Supreme Court to find those things unconstitutional. Now, you could potentially have somebody openly carrying, you know, and infringe on someone's right to vote because they feel intimidated. And so, I would encourage you to, take a look at this. This is actually good law and good amendment that he's trying to put forth, and we should all support that because we all support the democracy that our country gives us this right to vote. And so, I encourage you to support this amendment and keep guns out of our polling places.
Representative Geller.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I'll be very quick. If one person openly carrying does not intimidate someone from going to vote, what if an organization decides to put a whole line of people openly carrying, maybe 20, 30 people, all of them lined up openly with firearms, blocking the path from the parking lot into the polling place? Is there one person in this room that doesn't think that that might have the effect of intimidating people into not exercising their right to vote? Really?
Further debate? Further debate? Saying none. Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, the majority in the House is okay to infringe upon people's Second Amendment rights to not openly carry in Disney World, but they're not willing to do so to give freedom to people to vote at a polling place.
Representative Moskowitz, having closed on amendment, all those in favor of the adoption amendment say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, no.
No.
Show the amendment is up for question. Seeing five hands, the clerk will unlock the machine, and members proceed to vote. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? Have all members voted? The clerk will lock the machine and announce the vote.
38 yays, 77 nays, Mr. Speaker.
Show the amendment is not adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Moskowitz offered the following amendment, barcode 459629, remove line 81 and insert an amendment.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment would prohibit you openly carrying within a school safety zone. So, if you think 15 miles an hour infringes upon your right to speed, you should vote against this amendment.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor. Saying none, are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Debate on the amendment. Representative Gates, you're recognized in debate, or not?
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The amendment is unfriendly.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I completely agree with Representative Gates. The amendment is unfriendly to preschoolers.
Representative Moskowitz, having closed on his amendment, all those in favor of the adoption amendment say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, no.
No.
Show the amendment is, the clerk will unlock the machine, and members record their vote. Having seen five hands. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? The clerk will lock the machine and announce the vote.
37 yays, 79 nays, Mr. Speaker.
Show the amendment is not adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Murphy offered the following amendment, barcode 521399, remove line 95 and insert an amendment.
Representative Murphy, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment would state that someone who is openly carrying cannot have their weapon chambered or their hammer cocked while they are out and about in public with children and other persons.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor. None. Are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Is there debate on the amendment? Representative Gates, in debate.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The amendment is unfriendly.
Further debate, saying none. Representative Murphy, you're recognized to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I do realize that it is unfriendly, but I would like the members to remember that not all of us have the same timeframe and understanding of weapons, so we need to protect all of us by making sure that those that are now are now going to be open carrying understand that walking around with a bullet in their chamber could lead to an accident.
Representative Murphy, having closed on her amendment, all those in favor of the adoption amendment say yea.
Yea!
All opposed, no.
No!
Show the amendment is not adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Wood offered the following amendment with title amendment, barcode 333043, between lines 104 and 105, insert an amendment.
Representative Wood, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, members, this is a clarification of the legislative meeting exception.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Representative Ruson? Uh, Representative Ruson from Representative Fullwood's desk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Representative Wood, would you, um, give us a little more detail on what you mean? We don't want people to mistake if you don't mean legislators can carry guns into committee hearings and, and on the floor. What, what does this amendment do?
Representative Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, it, it states that, um, uh, a member of the legislature who is a concealed licensee, uh, may carry a concealed weapon in a meeting, a legislative meeting.
Further questions of the sponsor? Representative Baxley?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Do judges carry in chambers?
Representative Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, actually, uh, judges under our law are allowed to carry a concealed weapon in their courtroom without a license, and in fact can determine who in their courtroom will carry a concealed weapon.
Further questions? Representative Kerner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Representative Wood, uh, now that we found a corollary in existing statutory law to your amendment, why would you deny the opportunity and, uh, the opportunity for defense to other members of the public that are not sitting legislators in either of the chambers?
Representative Wood?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The, um, the exception is, uh, current law that no member of the public or anyone can carry a concealed weapon, uh, in the, um, uh, in the legislature or a meeting thereof. There are exceptions to that with certain designated, uh, law enforcement, uh, personnel, but this is a, um, uh, expanding, uh, that exception to allow legislators with licenses.
Representative Kerner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And forgive me for the, uh, for the mental image that I'm about to put before you, Representative Wood, but why not allow us legislators to openly carry a weapon in the chamber?
Representative Wood?
If you want to offer that as a substitute amendment, we can discuss it.
Further questions? Representative Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Wood, have you gotten support from this from the sergeant and armed staff? For this amendment?
Representative Wood?
Thank you for that great question, Representative Williams. Um, I did discuss it with the sergeant, and he decided that it would probably be in his best, best interest not to, uh, make a, um, decision on that question.
Probably sage advice. Representative Richardson, question?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, Representative Wood, why do you feel like, uh, you or any other legislator would need a gun in this chamber? Do you feel unsafe?
Representative Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, you know, that is a, that's a great question, Representative. I think it really applies to, um, the fact that we allow the judiciary, an equal co-branch of government, to have that privilege, and, um, I think it should be, um, enjoyed by duly-elected officials as ourselves. And in fact, you know, one of the, um, one of the provisions of this bill that I am amending states that, and let me get to, let me just read it back to you so that you can, uh, appreciate the declaration of policy of the legislature. We are amending and saying that the, the legislature finds as a matter of public policy and fact that the possession and carrying of weapons and firearms by law-abiding individuals for lawful purposes, including self-defense, enhances public safety. You know, we're role models for our society, and if a legislate, if a legislator has a concealed weapons license, I think he should be allowed to, uh, carry it when he is, uh, doing his official duties.
Representative Richardson?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, well, if, if legislators are going to be permitted to carry a gun on the, the floor here, uh, what about the staff? Should they carry a gun? Is their safety, um, as important as a legislator's, um, safety?
Representative Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, other states are looking at that, Representative Richardson. Um, I've got a press release here where the, uh, Indiana Senate passed a bill to allow their employees to, uh, carry, carry weapons, and so if, if you think it's important for our employees to carry weapons, we can entertain that, 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 uh, position if you want to introduce it.
Seeing no other questions, are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Is there debate on the amendment? Representative Gates?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Representative Wood, for such a provocative concept. This amendment, as is occasionally typical of Representative Wood's amendments, is neither friendly nor unfriendly. I leave to the body this question.
Representative Wood, seeing no other further debate, you're recognized to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I think we all, uh, have made our decisions about how we're going to vote on this, and so probably the best thing for me to do is wave my close.
You were real close there for a second. All those in favor of the adoption of the amendment, say yea.
Yea!
All opposed, no.
No!
Seeing five hands. The clerk will unlock the machine, members proceed to vote. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? The clerk will lock the machine and announce the vote.
Seventy-two yays, forty-three nays, Mr. Speaker.
Show the amendment is adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Murphy offered the following amendment with title amendment, barcode 827979, between lines 104 and 105, insert an amendment.
Representative Murphy, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment would require a temporary suspension of a concealed weapon license if the owner is found, is arrested for, while open carry for intoxication.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Saying none, are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
On the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Read the substitute amendment.
Representative Gates offered the following substitute amendment with title amendment, barcode 436295, between lines 104 and 105, insert an amendment.
Representative Gates, you're recognized to explain your substitute amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The substitute amendment does not allow someone to openly carry while impaired.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Are there amendments to the amendment?
None.
Are there amendments to the substitute amendment? Excuse me.
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate? Is there debate? Representative Murphy, in debate.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Chairman, for clarifying and cleaning the language.
Any further debate? Any further debate? Saying none. Representative Gates, you're recognized to close on your substitute amendment. Having waved close, all those in favor of the adoption of the substitute amendment say yea.
Yea!
All opposed, no. And show the substitute amendment is adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative, Representative Moskowitz offered the following amendment with title amendment, barcode 277363, between line, between lines 121 and 122, insert an amendment.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to explain your amendment.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker, and for, uh, the finale, uh, this amendment, uh, specifically says that a permanent resident alien is ineligible to have a concealed weapons permit.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Are there amendments to the amendment?
On the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Read the amendment to the amendment.
Representative Moskowitz offered the following amendment to, to amendment with title amendment, barcode 301111, remove line 5 of the amendment and insert an amendment.
Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to explain your amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment makes it slightly more narrow and clarifies the First Amendment that, uh, if you've come, uh, to, if you're a permanent resident, uh, and you have status that you obtained through a K-1 fiance visa, you're ineligible for a concealed weapons permit.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Is there debate on the amendment to the amendment? Is there debate on the amendment to the amendment? Representative Moskowitz, you're recognized to close on your amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker. On December 2nd, 2015, uh, there was a terrorist attack in San Bernardino. Uh, that person was able to come into the country through a K-1 fiance visa, uh, and so, uh, I believe, uh, this particular instance, until the country, uh, figures out, uh, how to properly vet these visas, we should make sure that they cannot receive concealed weapons permits.
Representative Moskowitz, having closed on his amendment to the amendment, all those in favor of the adoption of amendment to the amendment say yea.
Yea!
All opposed, no. Show the amendment to the amendment is adopted. Read the next amendment to the amendment.
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
On the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Read the substitute amendment.
Representative Gates offered the following substit, following substitute amendment with title amendment, barcode 907729, between lines 104 and 105, insert an amendment.
Representative Gates, you're recognized to explain your substitute amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The substitute amendment does not allow someone to openly carry if they are illegally present in the United States of America.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Are there questions of the sponsor? Are there amendments to the substitute amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate? Is there debate? Representative Gates, you're recognized to close on your substitute amendment. Having waved close, all those in favor of the adoption of the substitute amendment say yea.
Yea!
All opposed, no. Show the substitute amendment is adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Moskowitz offered the following amendment with title amendment, barcode 612719, between lines 121, 122, insert an amendment.
Hold on one second. Okay. Just want to make sure we're in the right, uh, spot here. So we are, Representative Moskowitz, you're going to explain, uh, amendment number 612719, and you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, this, uh, if you're a permit resident alien and you obtain permanent resident alien status through a K-1 fiance visa or the diversity visa program, uh, you are not allowed to get a concealed weapons permit.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Saying none. Are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
On the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Read the substitute amendment.
Representative Gates offered the following substitute amendment with title amendment, barcode 471769, between line 104 and 105, insert an amendment.
Representative Gates, you're recognized to explain your substitute amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The substitute amendment does not allow someone to openly carry who is illegally present in the United States of America.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Representative Rodriguez? Jay Rodriguez?
Could somebody in that circumstance get a permit anyway?
Representative Gates?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No.
Further questions? Further questions? Saying none. Are there amendments to the substitute amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate? Is there debate? Representative Moskowitz?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, this substitute amendment was clearly done in an effort to wipe out the previous amendment as if it never existed, which is a parliamentary tool, uh, that was used and used quite effectively by the representative. What you will wipe out by voting for this, though, is you will be supporting the process for someone to come in on a fiance visa, like the San Bernardino terrorist came in on a fiance visa, and you will be supporting her ability to get a concealed weapons permit if you go ahead and vote for the substitute.
Further debate on the amendment? On the substitute amendment? Representative Ray Winkle-Vassalinda, in debate.
It seems to me that if the San Bernardino, uh, woman perpetrator had applied for a concealed weapons permit, she may have been found out, and we may have figured out what, what she was about, and so, uh, I just wanted to make that comment.
Further debate? Further debate? Saying none. Representative Gates, you're recognized to close on your substitute amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The substitute amendment, uh, vote is simply a vote to ensure that people who are not here legally are not open carrying, and I would ask you to support the substitute amendment.
All those in favor of the adoption of the substitute amendment say yea.
Yea!
All opposed, no. Show the substitute amendment is adopted. Read the next amendment. Up. Seeing five hands. Sorry. Clerk will, uh, unlock the machine, members record their presence. Members record their vote. No. I think the ayes have it. Clerk will unlock the machine and announce the presence of form.
Hundred and fifteen yays, zero nays, Mr. Speaker.
Thanks. I think I misspoke earlier when I said announce your presence, so let's just make sure we're doing it correctly. Now, the clerk will unlock the machine, and the members will record their vote on barcode 471769, the substitute amendment. Okay. Let's try this one more time. The clerk will unlock the machine, the members will record their vote. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? Have all members voted? The clerk will lock the machine and announce the vote.
Hundred and sixteen yays, zero nays, Mr. Speaker.
Show the amendment, substitute amendment is adopted. Read the next amendment. Read the next amendment.
Representative Moskowitz offered the following amendment with title amendment, barcode 234715, between li, between lines 121 and 122, insert an amendment.
Representative Moskowitz, you recognize to explain your amendment.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, this amendment would specifically say that if you've renounced your U.S. citizenship, maybe we shouldn't give you a gun.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Are there amendments to the amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
On the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Read the substitute amendment.
Representative Gates offered the following substitute amendment with title amendment, barcode 354821, between lines 104 and 105, insert an amendment.
Representative Gates, you recognize to explain your substitute amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The substitute amendment would not allow someone illegally present in the United States of America to openly carry a firearm.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Are there amendments to the substitute amendment?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate? Is there debate? Representative Gates, you recognize to close on your substitute amendment, having waved close. All those in favor of the adoption of the substitute amendment, say yea.
Yea!
All opposed, no. Show the substitute amendment is adopted. Read the next amendment.
Representative Geller offered the following amendment with title amendment, barcode 802579, but, but, remove line 122 and insert an amendment.
Representative Geller, you recognize to explain your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, the amendment would have the effect, now, are we on the amendment or the amendment to the amendment?
We are on the amendment. 802579.
Okay. The amendment would have the effect of banning large-capacity magazines, and, uh, in the amendment itself, that's defined as magazines that carry more than ten rounds. Uh, we would be the 10th jurisdiction in the country to do that. Uh, some ban ten, some ban fifteen, which we'll get to when we get to the amendment, to the amendment. In the Sandy Hook case, the shooter was equipped with a large-capacity magazine, uh, that were, those were thirty rounds, which enabled him to fire a hundred and fifty-four rounds in less than five minutes. In Tucson, in the shooting involving Representative Gabby Giffords, uh, that was a thirty-three-round magazine, and as is frequently the case, the mass shooter was stopped when he was reloading. Somebody was able to run up a bystander and tackle the man because he had to stop shooting. This would have the effect of banning these large-capacity magazines. It wouldn't interfere with hunters. It wouldn't interfere with sportsmen. Might pose the slightest inconvenience to some target shooters, but this would do a lot to protect the safety of our citizens, and accordingly, I ask you to join me in adopting this amendment to ban large-capacity magazines, uh, from sale or use.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Seeing none. Are there amendments to the amendment?
On the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Read the amendment to the amendment.
Representative Geller offered the following amendment to amendment, barcode 033617, remove line twenty-two of the amendment and insert an amendment.
Representative Geller, you recognize to explain your amendment to the amendment.
Having spoken to some people about what, how guns come, people who know more about guns than me, there are apparently, uh, a number of firearms that come with more than ten. Uh, in looking at the states that have these bans, there are a couple that go with fifteen. One of those is Colorado. Colorado is a western state. It has, uh, obviously, from anybody who's been there, uh, a very great affinity for weapons, but nonetheless, in the wake of some of the incidents there, they've chosen to limit fifteen. I thought fifteen was a more reasonable limitation, and it would put us in line with the state of Colorado, and that's the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Questions of the sponsor? Is there debate on the amendment to the amendment? Debate on the amendment to the amendment? Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, I intend to suggest that the amendment itself is unfriendly. The amendment to the amendment doesn't move me either way.
Representative Geller, you recognize to close on your amendment to the amendment, having waved close. All those in favor of the adoption of the amendment, say yea.
Yea!
All opposed, no.
No!
Show the amendment to the amendment fails. Read the next amendment to the amendment.
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Are there substitute amendments?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Is there debate on the amendment? Representative Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The reason this amendment is so unfriendly is because we would really limit the ability of people to get highly sophisticated weapons training. In my district, we have some of the bravest people on the planet Earth who go out either as members of the military and acquire private firearms to protect it, per, perfect their range shooting, or we have private contractors who work alongside members of our military who would not have the opportunity to develop these skills that ultimately enhance our freedom if this amendment were to pass, so I would ask that you vote against it.
Is there further debate on the amendment? Seeing none. Representative Geller, you recognize to close on your amendment.
These large-capacity magazines are dangerous. They cost lives. They cost the lives of innocents. They cost the lives of children. Please join me in taking some kind of a stand that enables people to resist these out-of-control mass shooters. At least, we would have a chance to take them out before they do some of the damage they do. I hope you support the amendment.
All those in favor of the adoption of the amendment, say yea.
Yea!
All opposed, no.
No!
Show the amendment is not adopted. Seeing five hands. The clerk will unlock the machine and members will record their vote. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? Have all members voted? The clerk will lock the machine and announce the vote.
Thirty-five yays, eighty nays, Mr. Speaker.
Show the amendment is not adopted. Read the next amendment.
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
Hey, what do you say we show that bill rolled over for third reading? Read the next bill.
By Regulatory Affairs Committee and Representative Boyd, CS for House Bill 695, a bill to be entitled and acolyte to title insurance.
Representative Boyd, you recognize, explain the bill.
Thank you, Speaker, and members, thank you. This entire day has led up to this moment. And in 2014, the legislature passed House Bill 805, which sought to encourage large, well-capitalized title insurers to redomesticate in Florida. 805 also reduced the statutory premium reserve to 6.5% of premium for companies that have